Regular meeting agenda moved to this the fourth Tuesday because of the elections last week and so thank you all for joining us. I'd like to call the meeting to order Commissioner Jones.
President.
Commissioner Barbara.
Here.
Commissioner Gosar also here. And if you would stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The bud wasn't hot. The bud was not hot. Three, the public hearing. So we have one public hearing tonight, the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of 2000, Title III County Projects. So there is nobody online. Well, Amy is there. So we'll go in the room. Does anybody want to make a public comment? Or for the public hearing, a comment for the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination, Self-Determination Act of 2000, Title III County Projects. All right, how about online? Amy, you want to make a comment?
Probably not bad at that.
Last call online and in the room. Commissioners, any entertaining motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second. And any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item four, comments from the public. We'll go into the room here. Tim or?
Yes, please.
You bet.
Thank you.
Can you help us with the spelling of your name just to make sure we get it right?
Tim, T I M. Madsen, M A D S E N. I have documents relative to what we're discussing for each, all three of you. If I could give them to you.
Sure, you bet.
You guys can keep those. Thank you. My name's Tim Madsen. I'm here to speak tonight on my behalf and behalf of my partner, Stephen Pimps. The county has laws and it has a government and both of these are designed to protect its citizens and the citizens in this county. And the government and the laws aren't really protecting me in a way I think it should. And I'm here tonight to ask for your help. I build remote cabins in the mountains for a living. A person hires me and I go up there and I go to his remote property and I build him a cabin, start to finish. That's what I've been doing for quite some time. It's always been a dream and a hope of mine to change from building cabins to other people, to buying these remote properties up in the mountains, building a cabin on it and then selling it and flipping it for a profit. I've always wanted to do that. And last year I took that plunge. I bought my first property up there. I bought a one acre piece of property close to Rob Roy and it was really perfect for what I wanted to do. I wanted to go up there and build a cabin on it and flip it for a profit. And it was my first venture into doing this on my own, which I didn't have a lot of capital to do. Everything went pretty well with the purchase. And after I acquired the property fully, I went up there and started to do my own little survey of the property and figure out where I'm going to put this great cabin I was going to build. And that's when my nightmare began. I discovered when looking for my property lines, it became apparent that my neighbor had built his cabin halfway on my property, along with his entire septic system. My neighbor's name is Calvin Bochema. He's a very wealthy man. He lives in Davenport, Iowa with a very large family. They use his cabin for recreational purposes. In the winter, they like to use our mountains to snowmobile as a lot of wealthy out of stagers do. And in the summer, they go up there with their four wheelers and ride around in our beautiful mountains. His cabin's valued at about a million dollars. And it really discouraged me because, well, I can't begin to build until I rectify the situation. Of course, the first thing I did was I talked to some of the neighbors in the area and then some of the neighbors were also Calvin's friends. And they already knew that his cabin was on my property. And they made it pretty clear to me that he had acquired to purchase that property many years prior to me purchasing it and that he was unable to do so. They told me that he had waited until the owner at the time was put in hospice and dying of cancer. And that's when he built his cabin on the property. And they told me and later Calvin told me himself in a phone call that he placed his cabin where he placed it because he wanted a better view. And I eventually decided I need to call Calvin, try and resolve this, you know, hopefully, easily, but I didn't really know how. But I called him. And I have a recording of the conversation with him, but the gist of it is Calvin telling me to kick rocks. Basically making it pretty clear that if I wanted to try and do anything about it, he would bankrupt me. Discouraged, I began to seek out an official survey, which you have a copy in front of you, which clearly shows, you know, the encroachment. And attempted to contact Calvin again and resolve it again with the same results. And so I turned to the county. I turned to my government. I went to the county planner's office. Calvin is not just on my property. He's illegally built on his setback and he's illegally built on my setback. And his septic system is illegally on both setbacks. His cabin is not where the permit that his building permit that he got said is supposed to be. And his septic system obviously is not where his wastewater application says it's supposed to be. All of it is just a big lie and he put it where he put it. And I went to the county planner and I filed a formal complaint for the building of the setbacks and all the violations that he's in violation of are listed in there on a letter that you have on front that was sent, attempted to be sent to Calvin by the county planner's office. Gary is the code enforcement guy down at the county planner's office. And he assured me they have a procedure to deal with things like this. And I was relieved. I was like, yeah, the government's going to help me. We're going to get this resolved and I'm not going to lose a ton of money and my business venture isn't going to fall apart. I waited, you know, weeks went by and months went by. I went back in and, you know, I was checking in with Gary several times and in Gary's own words, after nothing was happening, Gary told me, well, I really don't have any authority. All I am is a letter mailer. He says, I'm really sorry. That is my phone. I can shut it off if it's a problem. I thought I had it off. He tells me, I'm just a letter mailer, you know, all I can do is mail him letters and I mail him certified letters. Of course, he knows they're coming and he doesn't accept them. So there's nothing I can do. And I was frustrated. I said, this can't be how it is, you know? So I also filed my own lawsuit against Calvin. I get an attorney and my partner and I, you know, he's a financial partner and I attorneys are expensive. And we continue on with the lawsuit. It's really slow and it's really expensive. And I go back to county planner's office because it just, I just can't believe that it's, I told Gary, I said, well, if he won't accept your certified letters, why don't you hire a process server and servant? Or better yet, he has an attorney here in town and you could just walk over and serve the attorney. Attorney can accept service for it. And that way he's served and you can begin whatever process you have to rectify this situation. Gary literally told me that it's not in the budget. I then went to the actual county planner who was a lot more helpful and he literally told me, now, now, Tim, we have we have ways of dealing with people like this that won't accept service. We work with the county prosecutor and we'll get it done that way. And again, I'm relieved. My government's going to help me. They're going to do what was designed and then they're going to enforce the laws that are on the books to protect things like this from happening. My lawsuit is during this time is progressing to a point where my partner and I have spent $85,000 and we aren't even halfway through. This very wealthy man and his very well-earning attorney file motions, make outlandish claims, everything they can to cost us money and do what they intend to do. Make it too expensive for me to do anything about. And we are currently at least $85,000 into this. I have receipts I can show if anybody doubts that. And we're only like halfway through and for me to go the rest of the way, it's going to cost like another $85,000. I decide I'm going to help my government along. I go down to county planner, I get a copy of the very letter that they, that's the fourth letter that they attempted to send to him that you wouldn't get, that you have a copy of that letter. And I walk it down to his attorney's office. And I hand it to his attorney. So his attorney has it. His attorney will show it to him. Then they know. And then maybe the ball will get rolling. Now, I understand the attorney and the county attorney, you know, they kind of work across the table from each other. After I gave that letter to his attorney, his attorney contacted the county attorney. And that very day, the county attorney contacted the county planner's office and told them to cease and desist enforcing all of this against Calvin, Calvin Bochema, that they were to stop. The county attorney contacted me, told me my hands are tied. I can't do anything. Prosecute attorney told me to stop. Said, that's the reason. And they said, well, there might be some sort of conflict of interest with them trying to enforce the law while I'm trying to sue him to be removed from my property. And they don't want to see any conflict of interest. I mean, I see what happened. I know what really happened. And I know why now my government is not helping me anymore. My government is sitting back and waiting to see if I will go broke trying to do your job. And when I say you, I don't mean you personally. I mean you as a government, a government as a whole that you represent. You know, I've already spent $85,000 trying to do what my government should have done anyway. And now my government tells me, you know what, we're not going to do anything. We're going to wait and see if you can do it on your own and how much it costs you and see if you go broke first. That's just not how it's supposed to be. This guy is blatantly, clearly in violation of multiple city codes, statutes. And he's wealthy enough that he just doesn't care. Never once has he even attempted in this lawsuit that's been going on for six months or so, has even attempted to suggest that maybe he will remove his cabin or stuff from my property. It's simply a matter of, everything that they bring up to us is a matter of, your cheapest way out of this is to do this. They calculate what it's going to cost me before they make any type of consideration on what they will do to remedy the situation. Me who, we've done nothing wrong. We just bought a piece of property from somebody who didn't even, you know, we bought it from the heirs of the deceased man. And they, they're from out of state. They didn't even know. Nobody knew. You know, his neighbors told me, his neighbors told me that he knew. And that he was kind of been talking about adverse possession. And if he could have gone 10 years without anybody knowing, he would have just legally owned the property, legally stole it through adverse possession. It's like eminent domain for a private citizen. Unfortunately for him and unfortunately for me, it didn't happen because five years into it, his cabin's been there for five years. I bought this property. And now I'm stuck. I'm stuck with lawyers who want tons and tons of money to proceed. And I got stuck with a government who won't help. I'm told by government officials and by lawyers that you three people have the power and the influence to enforce the laws that the county planner has laid out in front of you. That you can get the ball rolling to help me. If you have any questions about this, any at all, I will answer them. My contact information is on the top of the page. And I'm asking you, please, will you please help me? Please enforce the law. I, even if I proceed with my lawsuit and I win, there's no guarantee that I can get him removed from my property. And the amount of damages that I can seek against this man is miniscule to him. He'll pay it and laugh at me. You guys have the authority and that's why the law is written this way. And it's spelled out there in those pages from the county and the county planner's letter. You have the authority to begin fining this man large sums of upwards of $2,000 a day per day. That is the only thing, a threat of actual thousands of dollars a day of fines indefinitely is going to get this man to remove his cabin from my property. And I ask that you do whatever, use whatever power you have to get this done for us. Will you help me, please?
Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Madsen?
You're between a rock and hard place. There's no good.
Everybody I talked to at the county planner's office, the attorney's office, the surveyor's office, everybody knows about this case. And they're all flabbergasted. They're like, they can't believe that this is happening. They're like, this is crazy. This can't be true. When I first went to county planner, like, ah, come on, you got to be wrong. I mean, like, whole crap. You're right. They can see it right on their computer. They're all can't believe it. But nobody seems to want to do anything. They just want to watch me go broke trying to do the government's job for them. I understand that I have a right to sue him to remove him from my property, but the government also has a right and an obligation to enforce those laws that are there to protect people like me so I don't have to go broke trying to do it on my own.
So, Tim, thank you very much. Just one question. Was this platted when you bought the land? It was platted?
Yes. It's a subdivision been platted for 50 years or so.
Okay. And there were no survey monuments or corners on the property that you purchased or was there?
There are some markers. So my property has four corners. Three of the markers remain. The one marker that makes it obvious because it's right in front of his cabin is, was missing.
Okay. So you had to establish that monument to make sure or find it to make sure you had everything you had for the legal boundaries.
Yeah, I mean, I had a survey. I had coffee engineering do a survey of the property, you know, after I discovered the encroachment.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how a person could build on a platted subdivision if there were corners and monuments in place.
We are wondering the exact same thing. And six months and $85,000 later, I haven't even still got an answer. However, September 12th, he is being deposed and he will be asked that very question. How does this happen? I would love to hear that answer. I don't know how he did it or why he did it. I know what his neighbors tell me. You know, but that's his neighbors. That's not him. I don't know. I'm so sorry about that phone.
It could be worse.
Yeah. It's kind of like a little lullaby. That's good.
Terry, you have some questions or?
Well, so, um, is this at Albany?
Yes, it's a property just up by Rob Roy Reservoir in Albany County.
It's as far up as Rob Roy?
It's literally the property is about 500 yards from Rob Roy Reservoir.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's up above Albany.
All right, okay. Oh, I couldn't see that. That was nice if you could do that. Now I can. We've got a map right here too. Thank you.
Well, I'll tell you what my process will be, Tim, is I'm going to read through your documents and then I'll contact people in the county to understand what our abilities are. And I know you've outlined them there. Thank you for that. And then we'll figure out what we can and can't do. Don't appreciate if that's what's happened to you, somebody's disregard for your boundary and your private property. It's not very neighborly and then it's not very neighborly not to work out a solution that doesn't cost you and your co-owner to have to force it to happen. So I'll get back to you and I'll find out exactly what we have the ability to.
I appreciate that. The county attorney has said that there might be a conflict of interest. And maybe that's the case. But I don't think that would stop anybody from proceeding with assessing the fines. Of course, I'm not a lawyer, but I have lawyers and I pay them well, unfortunately. But they assure me that they can still assess them fines without going to court to collect them. Is there a way that I can stay in contact with somebody to see if anything is going to be done?
Yeah, we have our commissioners' website. You can go and you send an email. It goes to all three of us. And we try to get back to you.
If I don't hear from you, I'll email you.
Yep. And you have my phone number. So you can call me. That's probably the easiest way to get ahold of me.
Contact information is on the website for all three of us.
Just, please help me.
When you do that, that becomes public information, which should work to your advantage.
I appreciate it. All I'm asking is you help me. Do whatever you need to do to get the government to enforce the laws that are home of rocks. It's not fair that a government should be able to say, oh, you got a lawsuit going? And we're just going to wait and see how you do and see if you go broke. It's not right. It's not fair. Please do what you gotta do to get them laws enforced. You have a lot more power to remove this guy than I do. Thank you.
I'm very sorry that this has happened. This is, I mean, I really, really feel.
Thank you. We wish you all the best.
All right.
Thank you.
Any more comments?
I move that we close the comment period.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Five disclosures. Commissioner Jones, any disclosures?
I don't believe so.
Commissioner Barbara, any disclosures? And I have, I will stay from item 10 and item 14. The place I work is a CSBG recipient. So I'll move myself from those. Six considerations of changes on the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? All right, seven, approval of the consent agenda. Commissioners, any entertaining motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. That moves us to page three on the regular agenda, item eight. Present for ratification, to ratify FAA bipartisan infrastructure law, airport infrastructure grant, program grant, three dash fifty-six dash zero zero one seven dash zero five zero dash twenty twenty-four to Laramie Regional Airport to acquire a rotary plow for snow removal in the amount not to exceed nine hundred and ten thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and direct the chairman to sign the Albany County, for Albany County and authorize the Laramie Regional Airport Board Chair Malia Brown to sign on behalf of the airport upon concurrence with the city of Laramie. Amy, good evening. Florasaurus.
Good evening, Chairman Gosar and Commissioners. I appreciate you letting me join tonight via Zoom. I wanted to present for approval tonight a rotary plow, which is a, it's a very large piece of equipment that is a snow blower for the, it's a snow blower for the airport. The current plow we have right now is a 1994 Stuart Stevens. On our very first inspection in '21, the inspector talked to us about the need for a new blower. The blower we currently has have goes about five to six miles an hour. And in about every three hours, we blow the hydraulic hose on it. It's just such an old blower and it doesn't blow the snow very far, creating berms on the sides of the runway, which we then have to take back secondary equipment and clear those berms. The new blower that we're asking for approval for, it has the ability to move 4,000 tons of snow per hour and it can throw it up to 100 feet away from the sides of the runway. So we can take that out into the snow, into the safety area, making it much safer for us and much quicker for us to move snow. Top speed on this, this snow blower is 45 miles an hour. So depends on what type of snow we're moving, on how quickly we can move. But we're very excited about the opportunity to have something that can run for about 12 continuous hours during a snowstorm. This is, this would be purchased with bill and AIG money. It is, it's 95% paid for with the FAA, 3% for state funding and 2% local. We do have the local fund set aside. Back when we had the Chris and Cara's money, we did set aside our match money. So we have match money in the bank to cover the cost of this rotary plow. We don't believe we will have the rotary plow on the field this season based on how long equipment's taking to be delivered. We think we're about 12 to 15 months out. We're hoping to have it on the field next winter. And that's a very high level view about the snow blower. Do you guys have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Director Terrell? If not, an entertaining motion for item eight?
I move that we approve the FAA bipartisan infrastructure law so that the Laramie Regional Airport can acquire a rotary plow for snow removal. The amount of nine hundred and ten thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Could you add, direct the chair to sign?
And direct the chairman to sign for Albany County and authorize the Laramie Regional Airport Chair Malia Brown to sign on behalf of the airport.
Second agree.
Yes.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Amy. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item, item nine, award Title III funds in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars sixty-eight cents to Chad Dingus Albany County Fire Warden to be used for ongoing and future fuel mitigation projects, eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-nine cents to Aaron Appelhans, Albany County Sheriff for the repair and or replacement of equipment utilized in search and rescue operations on federal lands. Kayla, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have advertised for public notice for the Title III funds. Aaron had submitted a letter for the sheriff for himself and for the fire warden. They've historically split those funds. I think he got the extra penny this year. But other than that, everything is good to go. It's just so Tracy can disperse those funds.
Commissioners, any questions? Another entertaining motion for item nine, please.
I move that we award Title III funds in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents to Chad Dingus Albany County Fire Warden to be used for ongoing and future fuel mitigation projects and eleven thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-nine cents to Aaron Appelhans, Albany County Sheriff for repair and or replacement of equipment utilized in search and rescue operations on federal lands. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, Kayla. Item 10, present for approval, community service block grant, Albany County Federal Fiscal Year, 2024 Subrecipient Amendment One for Contract CFDA 93.569 for the following agencies, Laramie Interfaith in the amount of fifty-two thousand five hundred, Safe Project in the amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred, Laramie Reproductive Health in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred, Downtown Clinic in the amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred, Family Promise of Albany County in the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred, and direct the vice chairperson to sign. Bailey, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. These are just amendments to the current subrecipient agreements that we have. The CSBG board did decide to go ahead and give each agency an additional $500. Also in those amendments, you'll see an insurance, a piece about insurance that was required by our state funders with their onsite visit that we just had.
Commissioners, any questions? An entertaining motion for item 10, please.
I move that we provide item 10 as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed. And I'm standing. Thank you. I appreciate it, Bailey. Eleven. Present for approval, grant contract between the Wyoming Department of Family Services and Albany County Commissioners for the temporary assistance for needy families, CFDA number 93.558 grant in the amount of 112,000 for services provided October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025. Bailey, please.
This is just our agreement with the state for the annual TNF CPI funding.
Bailey, any questions, Commissioners? I'd entertain a motion for 11 then, please.
I move that we, item 11 as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
That motion carries. It's quiet in here without that fan. Twelve, present for approval, grant application to Rocky Mountain Blue Sky Grant Program in the amount of 154,221 for the purchase and installation of solar panels on the Albany County Search and Rescue Building. Bailey, please.
This is the application for the search and rescue building. I actually talked to Leo yesterday who had a call with Rocky Mountain Power a week or so ago. There's something that, there's an item in the application that he has to change and that would be the battery that loose or that, sorry, Creative Energies prefers to use. Rocky Mountain Power doesn't like that battery. They don't like the communication that then they can, they don't like the communication that this Fortress battery has. They like this Sonnen battery. Basically what Rocky Mountain Power said without saying is if your battery does not have, or if the battery in the application is not Sonnen, you're not being funded. So Leo is actually going back in and changing that and he's hoping to get numbers. He's hoping to never stay and hear from him. So the number on this agenda is incorrect. It'll probably be a couple thousand more. But the application's due on next Friday. So we do need to get it approved tonight. But it is just a couple thousand more. He feels very confident in if we switch out that battery. that will be funded. We, currently, there are no applications in Wyoming or from Wyoming yet. Um, but there is still, you know, a week and a half until the deadline, so.
Thank you, Bailey. Would a not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand, would that cover?
Let's do, maybe a not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five, please, just to be completely safe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions?
And Leo has no problem with this battery?
It's not his favorite, um, but what he was telling me, and I believe he called Commissioner Gosar as well, um, is it's, it's not his favorite, but they can make it work if they need to. Um, and it is, it's just a more expensive battery.
But I didn't ask about the warranties, but generally, my various batteries come with a certain amount of warranty. The one I've dealt with was a ten-year warranty that they replaced, uh, when it went bad.
Well, I did ask him. I was like, are these the only two options? Because I, I don't know. And he's like, no, there's another, but he's like, it doesn't work at this altitude. So that was automatically an option. Yeah.
Too many options.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioners? If not, entertain a motion for item twelve, please.
I move that we approve item twelve and make an adjustment to the contract so that it does not exceed a hundred and seventy-five.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Um, thirteen, present for consideration, the procurement policies and procedures and set a public hearing for October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and direct the clerk to advertise. Jennifer, Bailey, thank you for those.
So I just sent these to you this afternoon late. Um, the only big change in the entirety of this document, the entire thing has been revised to make it more clear. The old one was really scattered. You had to go here and then you had to go there. So I rearranged it so it makes more sense, but the only big change is changing the RFP amount that triggers the RFP requirement from twenty-five thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars, which is what we discussed at the prior meeting.
Commissioners, any questions? If not, entertain a motion for item thirteen, please.
I move that we, um, direct the, this, um, consider of the, uh, procurement policies and procedures and set a public hearing for October fifteenth and direct the clerk to advertise.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer. Present for, present for approval, contract between Wyoming Department of Health, Public Health Division, and Albany County for the fiscal, federal fiscal year twenty-five, community service block grant, CSBG funds in the amount of a hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred and eighty-seven through November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and direct the vice chairperson to sign. Bailey.
Uh, this is just the agreement, the FY twenty-five agreement with the CSBG, um, state office, so.
Thank you, Bailey. Any questions, Commissioners? Not an entertaining motion for fourteen, please.
I move that we approve item fourteen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed, and I will be abstained. That motion carries. Uh, thank you, Bailey. And fifteen, present for approval, contract between Wyoming Department of Health, Behavioral Health Division and Albany County Board of Commissioners as governing body for the Albany County Court Supervised Treatment Program in the amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five for state opioid response funding. Bailey.
This is Heather's, um, state opioid response funding. Um, it's actually more than we've seen previously, and we've been told we're going to be receiving amendments, um, to extend the term and increase the amount. So, but this is just the initial to get it going.
Commissioners, any questions? If not, entertain a motion for items fifteen, please.
I move that we approve item fifteen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Sixteen, present for approval, First Amendment to Contract between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming, by and through Integrated Juvenile Treatment Program and Greater Wyoming Big Brothers Big Sisters for Participant Support. Bailey, please.
Um, talking with Heather, she, um, wanted to amend the contract with Big Brothers Big Sisters, um, for additional funding as well as an extension of the timeframe. So, and this is to be paid out of her OJJDP grant.
Commissioners, any questions on item sixteen? Now, I didn't entertain a motion for sixteen, please.
I move that we approve item sixteen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Seventeen, present for approval, First Amendment to Contract between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming, by and through the Integrated Juvenile Treatment Program and Cathedral Home for Children for Participant Support. Bailey, please.
Uh, this is just the same situation with the Big Brothers contract. She just wanted to continue services another year.
Commissioners, any questions? Now, I entertain a motion for seventeen, please.
I move that we approve item seventeen as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Eighteen, acknowledge receipt to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, Department of the Treasury Audit Finding Determination and Acceptance of the Corrective Action Plan. Tracy, good evening.
Good evening. This is, the Department of Treasury has accepted our, um, corrective action, action plan and... Sorry, I am tired. Let's start at the beginning. The original finding that this was in regards to is, uh, where our accounting software had its limitations, and it was one of the catalysts for getting our new ERP system. So what this was is we were limited to recording an expenditure, which is actually, this is a, a transfer from ARPA to ARPA revenue loss, and it was an, recorded as an expenditure and then as a revenue. So therefore, it looked like it was doubled up on the expenditure and the revenue side because we didn't have a, the functionality to record it as a transfer. Um, the Department of Treasury has accepted our, um, corrective action plan. It has been corrected. We're doing it manually. Um, in our reporting processes for the auditors, until we get our ERP system implemented, um, then it should do it for us, but, um, and also, you'll note in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we didn't have any findings related to the Albany County government. So, I'm sure that helped in our decision process.
Bet.
Commissioners, any questions for Tracy? Now, I entertain a motion for eighteen, please.
I move that we, um, acknowledge the receipt of the, um, Department of Treasury Audit and Determination Acceptance of the Corrective Action Plan.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate it. Nineteen, present for approval, application for catering permit for Delancy Enterprises LLC doing business as hell on wheel package liquors for the UW event, a tribute to Steamboat to be held at four seventy State Highway two thirty, Laramie, Wyoming on September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, from four to nine P M. Kayla.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a catering permit for a Laramie County liquor license holder. So we have a letter from, uh, the clerk's office in Laramie County authorizing them to use their license in Albany County. Um, so everything is good on that side. They do this, I believe they do this tribute every year, um, about this time, so everything is in order.
Commissioners, any questions? If not, entertain a motion for nineteen, please.
I move that we approve the application for this catering permit. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Twenty, present for approval, application for catering permit for Albany Lodge for wedding reception for gooder to be held at five ninety-nine State Highway eleven, Laramie, Wyoming on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, from four P M to twelve A M. Kayla.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is just the catering permit for Albany Lodge. Um, everything is in order and ready to go.
Commissioners, any questions? Yeah. Now, entertain a motion for twenty, please.
I move that we approve item twenties presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Reappoint Sagan Wheeler, Derek Campbell, and Lauren Richards to the Community Service Block Grant Tripartite Board for the Business Sector for a three-year term effective June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Tracy.
Hello again. Uh, this is, just as it says, it's a reappointment. Um, it is retroactive back to June twenty-sixth. That's when our board had voted on, um, reinstating these or reappointing these members of our board. However, we wanted, um, Lauren Richards wants to be retired, like totally retired, so we gave him time to find a replacement. He hasn't found one yet, so he's agreed to stay on the board until that time. Um, talked to him again this weekend, and he really wants to be retired. So if you know anybody from the business sector that you think would be a good advocate for the CSBG, uh, grant, then send it our way, please.
Commissioners, any questions? Entertain a motion for twenty-one, please.
I move that we, we reappoint Sagan Wheeler, Derek Campbell, and Lauren Richards to the Community Service Block Grant Tripartite Board for the Business Sector for a three-year term effective, uh, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Tracy's bet.
And I will abstain again for item twenty-one. They do oversee the Downtown Clinic's application. Uh, that motion carries. Uh, twenty-two, present for approval, equitable sharing agreement and certification between the USDA and the Albany County Sheriff's Office. Tracy, please.
I know it says, uh, Sheriff Appelhans on there, but, um, in his absence, he asked me to, um, cover this agenda item for him. So this is the equitable sharing agreement that he does annually, which authorizes, um, us to stay within the program. So if they should have like a seizure of property, we get a portion of that once the case is settled and then get the proceeds. Um, there's, it's all zeros. We have no money at this time, but it's still a requirement.
Commissioners, any questions? My question is, there was a fixed land back of fifteen thousand dollars. Was that just a placeholder?
Um, I do know that they have a couple cases in the works, and so I think that's where he's hoping that we'll get that money this, this current fiscal year.
Thanks, Tracy. Uh, entertain a motion for twenty-two. No more questions.
I move that we approve item twenty-two as presented. Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thanks, Tracy. Twenty-three, discuss the November fifth Commissioners' meeting. Election day, so we'll have to do something different, I'm thinking.
Well, if Terry and Sue are gonna serve as judges again, it'd be a little hard for me to, for you to do the meeting by yourself.
Right.
Um, so I don't know if we wanna try... It's, we don't have to worry about payroll, so we can do it, we can do it on Monday, uh, if you would like to do it on Monday.
You mean the day before?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What was that for you though?
Yeah.
Well, we'll be setting up polls, but I could always have Cammy cover it, or if we wanted to do it. I don't know. Let me, yeah.
Yeah, what makes the most sense for you, Kayla?
Well, I will most likely canvass on that Friday or on that Thursday, because we have to do the post-election ballot audit on Thursday. So we could do it on Friday if you'd like, on the eighth, because the vouchers do go out, well, they go out that day. Why don't we do it on the first? Uh, I've, actually, the first would be perfectly fine if you guys are good with that.
I have no problem with that.
You don't have problems Friday the first, Pete, do you, Summer?
Not that I see right now.
Yeah.
So let's just do Friday the first.
At nine thirty?
At nine thirty.
Perfect. Thank you. One.
Not to be Debbie Downer, but there's ERP, there's H R. Don't be shocked if you go upstairs.
Just, just want to...
You got this reserved, you know, but you're gonna kick us out, so.
Nine thirty. Thank you. And thank you guys for doing that, because it was really helpful for Sue and Terry to both be judges too, so.
Oh, so.
You guys have to make a motion to set that meeting.
Okay. I entertain a motion for twenty-three then, for November first at, uh, nine thirty.
I move that we set the, at first meeting of the regular meeting of the Albany County Commission for Friday, December, sorry, November first at nine thirty.
Second.
Moving.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I'm, so we'll have our regular... So our regular meeting then would be on the nineteenth.
The second one, yeah.
The second one, well, yeah.
Okay.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Will that do anything with, and we can just have a conversation over email about, uh, the pre-agenda on that Tuesday? Will we have to reset that to some other day?
Yeah, we'll probably want to reset that. We could have it.
If we move it to the Friday before everybody has the weekend.
Yeah.
So you guys all have the weekend to look at things.
Is that meeting, so the nineteenth meeting? Well, we wouldn't have pre-agenda until that next week. Oh, you're tired. If we just had it on, I mean, we could have it. I think like, we could do it the... There are five Tuesdays in October, so we could do it.
The twenty-ninth?
The twenty-ninth.
No, it's already scheduled there, but you can at least have time.
We could just leave it on the twenty-first, couldn't we?
I think we can leave it on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Because, I mean, even at that, um, well, no, because that only gives us a couple days before the meeting.
You do it on the twenty-first.
If you wanna do it maybe on the twenty, I think we're gonna have to do it on the twenty... What about the week of the twenty-first? What does that look for you, Pete?
I've got it already on the October twenty-second, pre-agenda, but that doesn't mean it has to be.
We could just do it on the twenty-second.
Do I just do it on the twenty-second? All right, um, twenty-four, discuss solar panel project at the courthouse in Act TV. Who would like to take this one?
Me, Dick, please, yes, I get to.
It's called engineering, you know.
Um, I am here to answer any questions, and I can, um, at least give a little update on what we are looking at. Um, as far as the roof warranty, there's an issue, and it's not an issue. It's something that can be worked around, but it is, um, there is a concern for the roof warranty, because we just got it done a couple months ago. And if they drill through the hole, or if they drill holes through the roof, it can, uh, potentially damage the membrane, and then the trimco guys gotta come back, waterproof it. Um, if there's ballast in it, they, as they set them down, the solar panel guys have to be very delicate in setting those down, or they'll crush the roof and run warranty. Um, when the, the solar panel, uh, maintenance guys or any maintenance first there, they've gotta be extra careful not to damage the roof. Um, the other component is the structural loading. If they do ballast loading, then we have to make sure that we have adequate structural conditions so that they will, um, uh, damage the roof for the structure of the roof. And the, uh, other condition is, or the other concern rather, is the, um, state historic, uh, preservation board, because it is a historical building. We have not heard back from the folks in Cheyenne about what may or may not be required. Um, I don't think it would be a deal breaker, but they might have to be really low so they can't see, and then it has that parapet wall, so it might be shaded a majority of the time, so they might not be as efficient or as effective. So, that's where we're at, but I'm open for any other questions that you may have, and I don't... What was I supposed to talk about?
I think that was it. The concerns. Anthony and Jake had reached out to the roof people about the warranty and all of those things. So we wanted to bring that to you guys to see if we need to amend the RFP to remove the courthouse so that we don't have any potential concerns with the roof, since it is only a couple months old and a little stupid expensive, or if we wanna still move forward and then put, um, some kind of policies in place, or some, something in the contracts with whoever the installers and maintenance people would be to push that damage off, if anybody would agree to those terms.
Have you guys had any discussions with anybody who does this work? Have you guys had any discussions with anybody who does this work? You know, they concerned about it at all?
The solar panel?
Yeah.
Or, um, not exactly. I, and, and I can't actually say that entirely. I know that Anthony has discussed it with Leo a little bit, but I don't know, he didn't fill me in exactly on those details. Um, but what Jennifer had mentioned, we could do an addendum to identify all of these things to that RFP, to um, bring all of that to light, push it off onto um, installer. Um, or we could do it after, if it's awarded to a contractor, then we can amend their contract to require that stuff. If they would be amicable to it after the fact of having.
Don't we want that in front, Jennifer?
I, I think we can put all of that in there. I don't think we had, we did not put a draft contract in for this. We had no idea what it would look like, but we can amend the terms of the RFP to reflect the known potential issues and make whoever would be submitting it aware that it would be the installers, a liability the installers would have to cover, whether that means they adjust prices to compensate for their own insurance changes or whatever. I don't know what they would have to do on there.
And I know we're higher up here, but I have a flat roof at the clinic and there is no hole puncturing through the, to the flat roof. There's sleds and ballasts.
Ballast.
And uh, ties between the solar panels. So a tin uh, connector ties all the solar panels in, in series.
And I know it would be difficult to screw them down, because that base is
Right.
concrete for six or eight inches, so it would be pretty destructive. It would not be.
The, the angle as far as the most effectiveness of.
Uh, well, it'll, it'll make it a little less, uh, you know, you're supposed to have solar panels, that's your degree, uh, latitude. Sorry, my nerding. Um, but because you'll have less, you, you just want less wind, so you'll, you'll tip them back a little bit. They'll be a little less.
Yeah. And also, I, I should mention too, Anthony did mention this one thing that came out of the conversation between him and Leo, that Leo was saying that the roof slope is pretty severe and it might limit or eliminate the possibility of being able to put solar panels up there, because the roof is so steep that they can't get the adjustment elevation out of the legs to be able to get it to where it's level. And it would work, so that was an unknown. Um, but Leo said it was a concern.
But I, I don't feel like putting some of these concerns in the addendum, and then if that's not the way we go, then that's, if they can't make it happen, then we try something else.
When is it supposed to bid? Um, or when are the bids due?
I mean, where is the funding coming from?
You're looking at me?
I'm, I'm at the board, because we didn't budget anything for solar panels. My concern a little bit is that, how much we're gonna get back, that the, the cost to the return is not very high. I mean, it's gonna take this, what, upwards of thirty years to pay it off. I'm not sure that this is the most efficient building to use it on. I think maybe there are maybe better buildings that we can look at within the county. Or hopefully, if we get a new building, maybe we put it on our new building. I don't know. I, that's my, I'm trying to look at it from a cost standpoint. You know, we really cut down in budget when it came to spending money on employees and then we go and do a project like this. I just have a hard time. I don't know. As a taxpayer, that's my concerns.
Well, the concern that I have, along with that, is this is just like, you get brand-new asphalt down and you go, oh, we forgot to put all of the sewer under the road. And that is nothing but a blankety-blank problem. And I wouldn't do anything to deserve this roof now. That's nothing.
I had a call with Leo yesterday, because he thought of the batteries on the other, and he wanted to talk about this one, which it's not a grand, a good project, so it's not going to my office, but uh, I was telling, he had told me, you know, well, uh, last time I talked into, that this would be about a hundred thousand dollars to do the solar panels just themselves. He said our RFP has batteries in it. I don't know if that's supposed to have batteries in it or not for this building. He said that's another about a hundred thousand dollars, or about two hundred thousand dollars in this building alone. Um, and then running the numbers on this building with just solar panels, like Kayla said, it'd take about thirty years to pay off. Um, just the solar panels alone. The other thing I mentioned to him is, you know, we've been talking about a new building and he, before I could finish that, he's like, Blue Sky would love a project like that. He's like, Blue Sky would like a project, because then you could put, it would be part of the plan, like when we.
Yeah, we could incorporate it into.
Even incorporate it with that plan. You could put as many batteries as you want. Where here, he's telling me, and I don't know, but he was telling me that this, they're like suitcase size, the batteries are, or the ones he's been using. And I don't know where if we would store them, because we already have storage in your office with license plates. I'm not saying solar is a bad idea, I'm just saying maybe it's not right for this building alone, and we look at some other buildings for it. Also, the IRA direct pay stuff I've looked into, we don't qualify for that full amount, because we just don't quite fit in to their certain requirements. Thirty would probably be about max for it, um, but more like twenty percent is what we could get back of our total cost for it.
So I'm gonna push back a little bit. Um, raises went out this year, um, as high, uh, fairly substantial raises. We purchase a lot of things that don't pay back here. ERP, um, probably won't pay back. Um, and and then Ragnon Power has proposed fourteen and a half to fifteen percent electricity rates this year. Fifteen percent last year. Um, I'm not sure. I would be the, interested to think that it would be flat for the rest of the time. Um, somebody were to look at, at electricity rates around the America.
So why aren't we doing the things to lower the electricity rate?
We have done those things. You bet.
We're using, we're using coal and oil and all that, rather than the expensive.
Well, let's, let's not talk about the science of that, uh, Terry.
I didn't think you'd want to.
Well, I, I think the market's kinda speaking on that. Um, and quite honestly, the lowest kilowatt rate is renewable energy and it is solar energy. Um, and so, because you produce the power right on the place that you build it. Um, so, I say, let's open it up, and if they can't do it, they can't do it. And if batteries don't work, they don't work. We ask that those be separated, um, also, just to have an idea of what that would look like. Um, and this is going to be a difficult building, because this is three-phase power, uh, with a battery. Um, but we are gonna keep this building. Even though we're getting a new one, this is gonna be in the county livery for spite some time.
I did look. The RFP asks for project cost with and without battery storage. So that's already in it.
Alternate with the base and an alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I, I'm not sure with the payback period, that seems incredibly high to me. Um.
So, you, your direction then would be to issue an addendum to this, to identify those.
Known issues.
Those, yeah, however many, four or five issues.
If they can't do it, they can't do it. You know, if they're not gonna sign off on it, on the roof and all that stuff, then great, uh, we'll just move on. Uh, but that's my vote, but I, I'm one of three, so, um, you know, that is to be determined.
Yeah. And like I say, my big concern is the roof. Like Terry was saying, I don't wanna, we, we went with this manufacturer just so we would get that twenty-year warranty and to start damaging it is.
Just even set up the possibility of damaging.
Yeah, which we would, we would push those costs onto the solar panel, um, supplier contractor to.
And then we get to start all over with the roof.
And, and if we had, the solar panel providers would have to pay.
Yeah, but it's. Getting it out there to see if they have any interest, if they even feel like they wanna go there. Um, I, I'm okay with um, putting it out there. They decide whether or not they wanna take the risk, because they will know it'll be at their expense long before anything is placed up there. So I don't have a problem finding out how much they're gonna charge and once they're aware of that. And if it's even possible, if it's not possible, then it is not possible, but I, I don't wanna just shut down the project.
I agree. And, and looking at the RFP, we did ask for responders to give us the breakdown on payback and all of the things too, so that that can be evaluated when we get responses. So you'll have whatever actual numbers they can provide you at the time for both buildings.
Right.
So it doesn't have to be theoretical and such.
Yeah. And then we did receive SLR FF, S, whatever, funding. Um, SRLF funding from the federal government last year for two million dollars.
LATCF.
LATCF, there we are. Um, that we have to spend that money on. Um, we have two million dollars that, that is fitting out there. Um, so, um, now whether this fits under that, I think it does. Um, but maybe it does not.
We have, every time we've been talking about new facilities, that's been part of that money, as we've been putting it through. Just kinda allocating it towards that with new facility stuff, that two million dollars, every time we've talked about it.
Yeah. We are a bit of a ways from a new facility. Um, and, you know, um, if we are going to get that, we're going to have to pass a SPOT tax. Um, it seems that that would be twenty twenty-six before we even, or twenty twenty-five at the year list. So, I don't know. I mean, if Phil, I mean, you all make that determination, but um, we have more than two million dollars. I think it's more than two million. Is it not, Tracy? Do you remember?
About two point two.
Two point two is what I thought.
LATCF.
Yes.
Okay, and what about the state historical preservation office? Is somebody gonna follow?
Anthony has a call into them. We just haven't heard back from them yet, so we will follow up with them also.
And we'll also make that as part of the addendum items that the, the solar panel provider will have to get a permit or approval or whatever that process is from the um, state historic preservation board, so that we know that what they're doing is approved, so.
Okay.
Kayla, do you need a motion and a vote, or do you not?
Um, I, I think it's already out there, so.
No, I think we can do it. We just wanted to clarify what you wanted to see in the addendum and make you aware of the issues, so that when there was an addendum, you're like, what's happening here?
Do you wanna approve an addendum to add those? Okay.
No, we can do it after this discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
And if we get no bids, we, the answer might be in. Already, yeah. All right. Uh, thanks Jake. Twenty-five, make appointment to Pilot Hill. We had two people we had previously interviewed, um, Megan Hayes.
Yeah, they were on.
Wendy Berylson.
Yeah, they're both on the board right now.
They're both on the board. Uh, I entertain a motion to maybe uh, put them on separately, and you care if we put them both together?
We can put them on together.
I entertain a motion for Pilot Hill Board.
I move that we appoint um, Megan Hayes and Wendy Berylson to the Pilot Hill Inc. Board as representatives from the county. Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, Kayla, could you get those terms, just so we have it out there? Is that three-year terms?
Yeah.
I believe they are.
Yeah, so, let's see here. Reappointed to the Pilot Hill for a three-year term to expire in September of twenty twenty-seven for both of them.
Okay. Expiring uh, twenty twenty-seven, September. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Make appointment to the Albany County Transportation Board, that uh, we had one application, Thomas Wheat. Um, and we had interviewed him previously. Um, I'd entertain a motion for the transportation authority.
Did Walt withdraw his? He did not. He kept it, he kept it on there. He just, because you guys had already interviewed him twice already, um, I think.
So why do we only have one application?
It is him. Just his. It is his.
Oh, okay.
Thomas Walt. Thomas Walt.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry, it's Thomas Walt Wheat.
So I always, I've always known it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I entertain a motion from twenty-six, please.
I make a motion that we appoint Walt Wheat, Wheat, um, to the Albany County Transportation Authority Board. Second.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Twenty-seven, executive session pursuant to Wyoming State Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A, Roman numerat seven and three. I entertain that motion.
I move that we exit regular session and move into executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A, seven and three. That's seven oh five. Second.
Moving and seconded. Any further discussions? Hearing and seeing, done all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, that motion carries. Leave regular session, go into executive session. So we'll stop the video and we'll uh, be back. So we'll stop the video and we'll, uh, be back.
To get out of executive session.
Okay, item 29, return to regular session. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we return to regular session at 7:40.
7:47.
7:47.
Third second. Moved in second. Any further discussion?
There he is, sign done.
All those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Leaving executive session, entering regular session. Action if needed regarding executive session. There is no action.